Well, welcome everybody to the North Hampton Planning Board Meeting of January 13th, 2022. Typo on our agenda, I've been doing that for months, about a month now.
I actually corrected that for the official agenda on the calendar.
So we only have a few very few items on the agenda. The largest one will be a public hearing on zoning amendments, really some housekeeping changes. But before we get to that, we'll open the podium, so to speak, for anyone from the public who would like to comment on other items in the city not related to this, these housekeeping changes. If there are anyone who'd like to comment?
I'd actually like to make a quick comment. So I, this is my first, I'm going through my first project of demoing a property. And it is a massive project in Northampton. And I think something that we should look into is potentially making it easier and streamlining it. You know, putting in place stops when needed, but it is a huge cost and I'm not sure it needs to be.
All right, and Sam, just for the record, so we treat everyone to say what's your address?
Yeah, 245 North Street, Northampton.
Okay, thank you very much. We could talk about that as a further point and see whether it falls under the planning board jurisdiction or the the building, building inspector, how that works. All right, well then at, it's now 7:08, let's open a public hearing on zoning amendments relative to housekeeping changes to the zoning ordinance. This is a public hearing. And Carolyn, as with other ordinances, we want to end this discussion with a recommendation, the City Council?
Yes, that's right. So I can explain a little bit. This was a carryover from last year, the, there was a council subcommittee that went through all the code of ordinances to do these little cleanups, make sure that things were referenced properly and so it took such a long time, they didn't quite get to it before the end of the last council, so they've referred it to the new council. And almost had it ready for December and then just couldn't squeeze it onto the agenda. So this is related to the zoning ordinances since all amendments to the zoning code require a public hearing by the planning board and legislative matters. Yeah, it's, uh, this is the point at which you all then hold the public hearing, make a recommendation to full council, legislative matters, subcommittee of council also holds a public hearing and then makes a recommendation to full council and then it goes to the council floor. Just a note, it probably won't affect you so much, but council is sort of reorganizing how they do their voting on items, so they're not going to be taking two consecutive readings and votes on ordinances. They're going to sort of split that up and if anybody's interested in understanding that more, they can certainly attend council meeting. But if any of you had followed zoning ordinance amendments previously, you might remember that once the ordinance leaves your review and with your recommendation, it goes ultimately back to city council and the city council takes it up or had taken it up at two consecutive meetings and it would take two consecutive votes, which extends, can extend the timeline, of course, for adoption. And so they've sort of massaged that a bit, so that's going to look a little bit differently. It doesn't affect the outcome necessarily, but anyway, just thought I'd let you know about that. And then just, I don't know if anybody had the ability to look at these things, these items, but their amendments to our definition section, sort of updating language, going from assisted living residents and replacing it with changing the phrase disabled residents to persons with disabilities, these are recommendations. It also came from the Disability Commission, so they've looked at that. Also replacing throughout the code, the term development with sustainability to reflect the name, the official name of our office. And there's some other accessibility, you know, updated language around people who have accessibility issues. And to reflect the sort of more up-to-date terminology. So essentially they're little bits in, I think there are 15 of these little sections of the code. And I'd be happy to go through particular ones or if you want to read through them all now, one by one, that's fine too, but they're pretty straightforward. Really just edits.
So Carolyn, they do seem pretty straightforward and the one that repeated quite a few times replaced the word development with sustainability, that has to do with your office?
Right, right. Yeah, that's the one that shows up the most in this list.
The only one of substance is this one about the phrase 500 square feet of gross floor area up to a maximum of two per dwelling. And then you've struck that and just say, see this table here?
Right.
The one you were mentioning earlier, this, it's at the top of the screen here, handicap access and replacing it with accessible wheelchair. It doesn't really make sense because that part of the, I mean, I don't know if you want to get back into the code, we're in our, in our Northampton code, it's, it's saying handicap access ramps for access by the physically handicapped as defined by MGL, Chapter 48, Section 3, are except, are exempt from these dimensional requirements. And they're saying, let's use different language from the state code. And it just doesn't make sense to add inconsistency just for, I guess they determine like this is like more, I guess it's a political correct thing or something, I don't understand what's the point of making an inconsistency with the state code on purpose when there's like a legal reason why those use the same terminology?
Yeah, but so for that one in particular, let me just go pull, I can share that 6.2 with, just let me know if you see the screen change.
It's in the table of dimension, all inventory regulations.
Yeah, I just need to oops. Trying to get to my well, here. I'm gonna stop share because I can't.
To be clear, I'm not trying to argue that the state wording of things makes any sense at all. I'm just saying we should be consistent with the state.
Yeah.
The MGL, it just, you expose all kinds of, there's all kinds of lawsuits all the time and accessibility, so it's just good to be consistent.
Yeah, so let me put the
The small language problems that occur in state law, it's really, it's not good. I would agree with that sentiment.
Okay, in fact, you know, I was just looking at that section for another another reason and I can't seem to.
It's in 356-2, Section A. Just the, it's the header, it's the.
Right, right, got it, okay, so here it is, so. Yeah, okay, so you can see that too, it's right here. This section.
Right, and MGL, I mean, I don't know if you have the state code handy, but the state code specifically calls it handicap access ramps, so I'm not saying they're right, I just, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess that, I mean, really, it probably would be up to council if you wanted to make a recommendation that we not change that language because it's linked to the state code. That's certainly, you know, an option for you all, you could also just, in the alternative, you could say for that one section of proposed amendments that you would ask the council to consider that, you know, if you don't necessarily feel strongly one way or the other, you could just highlight that for something that the city council can consider.
Would also seem to be somewhat limiting if they're talking about ramps that people who are mobile and impaired would also use walkers to go up a ramp or down a ramp and not just wheelchairs?
Right. Yeah, I mean, and they're sort of referring to that as well to say, I mean, when you, I mean, it's a pretty broad statement to say persons with disabilities anyway, you know, sort of covers, you know, that whole spectrum. As to your point, George.
I think that's a good compromise to highlight this one, this one area and ask the city council to do the wordsmithing and notice that.
Yeah, I mean, physically handicapped is what the state code says also, I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't really understand like if it actually has any bearing at all, I mean, if someone's 95 years old and they're physically handicapped, are they a person with disabilities? I'm not quite sure how that, like, I don't know. But I know that there's like disability law and there's, you know, state benefits and things that go along with disability. I, I'm not an expert on this, but I would just, I like things, when you go from one code to another, it's nice when things line up.
Yeah.
That's all I know.
Okay, are there any other changes on the list that made any members a little curious? Want to follow up on? If not, why don't we pause for a minute and turn to our, you know, the participants? And at this point, we'll open up the discussion to anyone from the audience who'd like to comment on this proposed zoning amendment? Nobody out there? All right, okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thanks, Corinne. All right, hello Krista, so now as we're in a Zoom meeting, we need to do our roll call by voice. So the motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. How do you feel about that, Melissa?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And David?
Yeah.
Corinne?
Yes.
And Jenna?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And George also votes yes. So the public hearing portion is closed, any other comments or questions for Carolyn on these amendments?
This is a very small, I feel a George-like comment, but in the edits to 350-8.1, it says a maximum of two per dwelling unit development. And I don't, I think that's just a typo, I think the word development is not actually in the language that it's correcting.
The development with a capital D got cut and pasted from another piece, yeah. So noted, so we're highlighting two areas in this document for the council to take a look at. Any other wordsmithing notions out there? All right, is there a motion that someone would like to make about a recommendation in the city council?
I would move to recommend adoption of the zoning amendments relative to housekeeping changes to the zoning ordinance with the highlighted sections previously mentioned for their further consideration.
Thank you. Seconded by Melissa, thank you. So we'll go to a voice vote, let's start again with Melissa.
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And David? Corinne?
Yes.
And Jenna?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And George also for unanimous recommendation. Well, thanks Carolyn for laying that out for us. And you've been for keeping us on our toes.
I don't think we have any A and Rs, just so you know. Just gonna double check, make sure that I didn't miss anything. But I sort of have that on there as a standing because sometimes come, things come in after I post the agenda. So.
There's the minutes of December 9. Everybody had a chance to review those minutes. Their motion to accept or edit the minutes of December 9.
I'll move to accept the minutes of December 9.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Melissa and Krista. All right. Okay, let's go to a voice vote, we'll go a little backwards this time, Sam, how do you feel about those minutes?
I love them.
Okay, that's a thumbs up for approval, I guess, and Krista?
Yes, love them.
Jenna?
Love them.
Corinne?
Sounds good.
Yes, David?
I like them.
Okay, all right, and Chris?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, and George says yes unanimously approved, that's great. So the last two items have to do with our kind of our own boards' housekeeping. We have some committee assignments that we've taken on in the past, Carolyn sent out a list of those. We also have a vacancy for our vice chair. Why don't we take the, the vice chair first, you know, that, you remember that Marissa was our vice chair for the past year, perhaps when Alan Burson stepped down, and Marissa has since gone on to the city council. So there's not a, a long history in the planning board of, you know, hard electioneering around positions for the vice chair or the chair. But this time we did it to people who kind of threw their hats in the ring and are interested in the position. So both Melissa and Jenna were interested in perhaps filling that role. Is there anyone else who would like to throw their hat in the ring as a vice chair? At this time? Nobody wants to fuck the big war chest of Jenna and Melissa?
I like to have brides for my boo.
Is this, is the vice chairmanship or chairpersonship traditionally a stepping stone to city council?
I don't think that's ever happened in the past that I'm aware of.
Okay.
It is a stepping stone to the chair's regal appointment, for sure.
I mean, you know, the city council are largely stepping stone to the mayor, so this could be the next big move for one of you guys.
Does the chair get those cool headphones?
I'm, I'm happy to pass those down. And actually, you know, at this time, there could be a nomination for the chair also. I, I fully intend to do this for one more year and then step down. But let's, let's just deal with this vice chair now. So is there a nomination from the floor? For our vice chair?
I actually am, I'm gonna waive my offer in lieu of Jenna. I'm more than happy, love to get behind Jenna on it, so, and that takes it, makes, makes it easier.
Thank you very much, Melissa.
I tried to do the same for Melissa earlier, we had a very funny back and forth.
Yeah.
I was about to nominate both of you.
Oh, Vice President.
Co-Vice Chair.
Sounds like Rome.
I'll go, I'll take vice, vice.
I second Melissa's nomination for Jenna.
Well, keep though, well then Jenna, Jenna White is up for election as the vice chair. All those in favor of Jenna? Boy, I, I think we can do a hand raise, I don't know if this is a voice vote, but congratulations Jenna and Melissa, thank you very much. There was a lot of smoky backroom politicking going on over the past three hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Glad it worked out, I'll keep going. Thank you, and, and at this point, I'm certainly, the floor is open for anyone who would like to nominate someone for the chair other than the, the guy with the big earmuffs on. All right, here and now, I'll keep going for another year, thank you very much.
Well, wait, you're so officially, you're putting your name in for nomination and then can someone second that and then we can do a?
We have to renominate George? Okay, I, I will nominate George to continue his, his iron grip.
I will second that.
All right.
And then we actually do need a roll call, so I can, I'd be happy to do that. Melissa?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Krista Granat?
Yes.
Jenna White?
Yes.
Sam Taylor?
Yes.
And George, go out, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so that was unanimous too.
All right, thank you very much Jenna for stepping up for that. And best of luck for the duties while I'm off camping this summer. And then maybe you could put up on the screen for us, Carolyn, the, the kind of committee we, we have some outgoing commitment to represent it to various boards in the city and the region.
Yep, so this is last year's, do you see it? Committee list, I can zoom in. Whoops, hold on, whoa. So we have capital improvements committee, which is not, meets in the fall, starting in the fall, so that's finished for now. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Technical Staff Review for bigger projects that are potentially coming forward in front of the board and then Community Preservation Committee. So for that, I'll start, I just want to do an FYI for that one. Jenna stepped up last spring to actually fill in Alan's, Alan Burson's slot, but now a renomination is necessary because that time, that term ended anyway. So that one, you know, Jenna just started, so I don't know if you're, you know, how the board feels about that. But I know that one is definitely, we need a nomination sooner than later for that because the second, the new round for 2022 is starting up, so we'd want to make sure that we had representation for that, for starting that round.
So I will nominate Jenna to continue her, or is that what we're saying, Jenna wants to continue?
I'm fine to continue for now, I would just say that if, and this is a big if, but if George does indeed step down as chair in a year or so and if I were to become chair at that point, I would not want to stay on the CPC at that point. So if somebody else is eager to participate, I am experiencing and had heard from others of you who've been on the committee that it is a bit of a learning curve. So if somebody wants to kind of dive in now to start that process, I'm fine with that too. So again, I'm happy to continue for the time being, but may not want to have both in the future, so do with that what you will.
Well, I would say, Daddy, you really just got your feet wet in it the first time. And I, I know both David and I've had a chance to be through a bit of it, so I think it would be good for you to have one more year at it to get that kind of grounded in the dealings and, and it's actually good for the committee too, that there's not a big turnover all the time that we put someone else in, so I would second your nomination for, for that role.
Tied by me.
Then you have to do roll call for that too, yeah.
Okay, all right, so the recommendation for Jenna White to continue as our CPC representative? Melissa?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
And Krista?
Yes.
Yes.
And George says yes also.
Carolyn, I have a couple of just sort of technical questions for you about that, so maybe we can stay on for two minutes at the end, so I can ask them. Yeah, thanks.
And Carolyn, I wonder for the the capital improvements, if in fact the mayor does reinstitute it, it'd be nice to have somebody ready to go for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it would be nice for one of the members to step up for that, I think, and the number here who's got some good, Melissa would be.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
All right, any other self-nominations? Good? All right. So again, we'll go through a voice vote. Those who are in favor of Melissa Fowler filling up the planning board's role for the capital improvements. Let's start with Krista.
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
If George says yes, and Melissa?
Yes, I'm happy to volunteer for the committee that doesn't currently exist.
There's a big stipend with it, and Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, I should, I, I should actually add that I think most, Marissa told me outside of this forum that, that she found it actually to be a very interesting conversation and I think Gina Louise was quite involved. But it was like unclear how her involvement should be because I can't remember how the timing was, I think it was after the election. But I think it's a, it sounded like it was probably going to exist and be an interesting conversation.
It's very interesting to see how the budgets are kind of wrangled over because it is the big capital budget, but you get to hear a lot about the different city departments. And I made a little comment about stipends there, but just for the public to know, nobody on the planning board gets a stipend for this role or any other role. We're all volunteers, unfortunately, we don't get health benefits or sick time. What else do we have left? David's gonna continue as rep to the Pioneer Valley Regional Planning Committee?
I can if, if no one else wants to do it, I, I actually find it's constantly annoying because it's always at the same time as one of our meetings. It, it usually overlaps, I usually end up going, it, it's usually like an hour before our meetings, but they go on for a long time and I usually leave early. But there's some interesting ones, some less interesting ones. But there's some interesting ones, some less interesting ones. Lot of rules of order, et cetera.
Okay, go. Well, David's been nominated and accepted to be our rep to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I guess we'll go through a voice vote again. Let's start with Melissa this time.
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
David?
Okay.
Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
And George certainly says yes also. Carolyn, in the way in the past, I may brought this up again, the planning board also had a rep, I think, for the housing partnership, but we don't, there's not a seat there for us, correct?
So a couple of years ago, there was a conversation, actually Alan Burson was sitting on that, in that space. And there wasn't a lot of activity. The housing partnership was was working on at the time. And I think there was a decision made that they would invite planning staff to one of their meetings to do an update instead of having a regular rep come from the planning board because they felt like that might be more productive to, instead of having sort of every month, having someone from the planning board show up that maybe just quarterly have an update about sort of what's going on. So I don't know if there was officially, what I can look at is, I don't think there's an officially a slot on housing partnership, but let me just, well, I mean, maybe we can do the next, the technical staff review and I can just pop open the committee assignments for housing partnership and see what it says. If that works.
It seems to me it's such a big topic in relation to housing and development in the city. And playing, there's a lot of projects that have happened that, that would be a very profitable for both boards or committees to to have that kind of representation, you know, because I don't think since Alan left, we've had, we've been able to schedule any of those updates. And I know when I served on the housing partnership, I was able to help some of the members with the whole process for applications and planning board reviews and things like that. And certainly I think we could learn a lot from what the housing partnership looks like. And I'm not trying to add more work to all, to the volunteers on the planning board, but I thought it was rewarding for me personally, and also it helped when I reported back to the board on their discussions. So if you wanted to look at that, is Sarah LaValle the staff person to housing partnership?
No, it's Keith who, Benoit, who took over, who took the position that Peg Keller formerly had and after she retired. So the body, the housing partnership is comprised of eleven members representing people across the real estate industry and housing, as well as city boards and commissions, including planning and or zoning board. So what I can do is I don't know if they have full membership yet. I mean, the bottom line is, I think that they, it would, they, the partnership would probably find it helpful to understand what issues are in front of the planning board. I don't think there would be objection to having a planning board rep again, because sort of that was the regular thing until a couple of years ago when it seemed like at least the way Alan presented it was, it wasn't very, he didn't feel like he was, there was a lot of interaction and productive sort of conversation that he could bring from the planning board. So, you know, we can certainly put that slot on and if someone wants to participate as the rep from the planning board to housing partnership, they meet once a month on Mondays. I have to figure out which day it is. I can look on the calendar. Right now, they're sort of on an extended, they're only going to meet once every six weeks for the spring. For the period now, we're having some staffing shortages. Keith was actually out on medical leave. So we're, we've kind of spread out the timeline so that we can cover that gap a little bit more easily. So it certainly wouldn't be regular meetings right now.
Okay, go. So you could check into it, you could just come back, revisit this again at our next meeting. It probably wouldn't be dying for that. Well, let me ask, is there anyone on the board who doesn't have one of these outside commitments? Who the housing partnership kind of rings a bell or strikes a chord?
I'd be happy to if nobody else wants to, but I'm not attached to it.
Thanks Corinne. So let's leave it like that, that we have a warm, interested body who would like to share with the housing partnership and be kind of our conduit back and forth to them. I do think it's important. And I don't want to seat every committee in town, transportation and parking, the Veterans Affairs, the Disability Committee. I don't think all of those need a planning board rep, but I think the housing part, because of affordable housing and the importance in our city, I just think it's a really good overlap with our planning.
So I can certainly confirm the here, the meeting dates at the next meeting and you all can decide that. And then just to sort of go over the last committee, which is the Technical Review Committee, meets when necessary, if there are big projects, and it's usually first thing in the morning. We haven't had, well, we did have one meeting that actually, we started meeting in person and then we pulled back and we're back to Zoom for at least till, I think till mid February. I don't know that there's another, we don't have another scheduled meeting yet, but it's you know, typically it's Tuesday mornings at seven thirty or eight, depending on how many projects. We only look at two projects at a time, half hour at the most. So if there's only one project gone for that day, I usually slotted at the eight AM instead of seven thirty. And then everything's completed usually by eight thirty. And it's really just to give a feedback to applicants about what things they're going to need to provide in their application. Sometimes projects move forward, sometimes they don't. So it's not always a guarantee that the projects that are viewed are actually going to go anywhere. And the part of the committee also is, has representation from the Fire Department, DPW, the Building Department, Conservation Commission, and Economic Development.
And I offered to be that because I think I'm the only retired bloke on this team who never has anything going on at seven thirty in the morning. While the rest of you are getting ready for work are already hours into work. So that was one reason why I kind of said I'd be happy to do it. And I know Sam has also been part of that in the past.
I enjoy this. I enjoy it.
And we can only have one person from the planning board, so that's why in case someone can't make it, there's a backup.
All right, so Sam, does it, does it fit your schedule, the seven thirties when they, when they do have those meetings?
Yeah, generally, I'm gonna make my own schedule, I guess.
Okay, all right. So I'm happy to be the backup then. If Sam's not available, I'll fill in for him on Tuesday.
Great. Wonderful.
All right. Do you have anything else in front of us?
Don't. I'm just, like I mentioned at the beginning, we're next, in two weeks, we'll have a public forum. We're gonna invite, you know, this is for Florence Center and downtown, so it's going, they'll, we're gonna send out notice to the DNA, the Chamber, Florence Civic and Business, builders, realtors, sort of the whole range of residents, city councillors, their listservs, or everybody we can hit. So, you know, there'll be lots of squares on the screen, hopefully.
Great. It's a very exciting topic. I could see why a lot of people will be there. Or everybody, you'll send a link to us for some kind of latest draft?
Yes, the draft, I'm gonna send the notice for the meeting first because the consultants are still working on the draft. It probably won't be ready till next week. It'll be on the web. We'll put it up on the webpage as soon as we get it.
And that's in two weeks?
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks everybody for showing up this Monday night.
I had one more question. I don't know if anyone knows this, or Jenna, maybe you heard about this. On the, that the O'Connell Development is applying for CPC funding for a restoration of the St. John Cantius Church. And there's going to be some, I assume that means they're going to come back as a multifamily building here to this body at some point. There doesn't seem to be anything in the, in the file on like what they're proposing. There's just like an eligibility form for CPC.
Right, so that's, as you remember, probably that's always the first step, is just sort of putting in the concept and there's no real backing to that. So they're just testing the waters. You know, we've been encouraging them to look at alternative fundings for preservation. So that, I guess it depends on, you know, the original permit that the board approved showed the reuse of that church. So I, you know, we go back and look at, it may not need planning board approval because the site plan approved already, you know, was for the reuse of the church.
So it's only if they change the number of units or something?
No, because there's no minimum lot size. So I can't care, I don't know what they're proposing to do, so I can't tell you.
Okay.
I thought the site plan we approved did not have to do with the church, that they sort of described what they were talking about, but that what we approved didn't cover that part of the property. Am I misremembering?
It didn't, they did not have a use. Their goal was to save the church, but the site plan showed the church. So any use that's allowed in the zoning may very well be allowed by right and not need any, you know, approval by the board. So a new use comes into any building downtown, the planning board doesn't really see it necessarily. So it just, it really depends on whether there are site changes or if the use they're proposing triggers a permit.
When we were talking, when the CPC met at the end of, or I guess it was mid-December to talk about this next round of funding, the chair asked for an update from Sarah about what projects were, we were anticipating, and that project was not on the list at that time. So the article in the Gazette was news to me, and I think to the rest of the board as well, that they were exploring that prospect.
Right.
So all I know is what I read about it.
I think there's only three eligibility forms in those, in the file. So yeah, it might be a light light session.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments for the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're motion to adjourn at seven fifty. Let's have a voice roll call. Melissa?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And David?
Yep.
Jenna?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Say um.
Yes.
George, yes, so we're unanimous. Thanks Carolyn.
Thanks everyone.